Calling to order, the February 20, 24 regular.
Your microphone, Mr. Denmark.
Calling to order, the February 20th, 2024 Whittier, regular Whittier City Council meeting. Please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we begin tonight's meeting, please note that digital copies of tonight's meeting packet are available on our website. We are unable to get tonight's meeting on YouTube. The meeting will be audio recorded, so apologies to anybody who's trying to look in on YouTube. But our system is not accommodating here this evening. And I'd also like to thank the city clerk. She has given me a cheat sheet to serve as my one stint as acting mayor here. So, Madam Clerk, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Mr. Shen. Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. McAlto.
Here.
Mr. Pincush.
Here.
Mr. Denmark.
Here.
Mr. Blair.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, next agenda item is citizen comments. Any agenda items except those included as scheduled for public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed into speech?
The first signed in is Ms. Jamie Loon.
Good evening, Council. I just wanted to give a super quick Parks and Rec related update. We are still grooming and doing lantern trails in the tree hunt when weather allows. Was also able to attend the harbor cleanup and put out our fire pit and chairs and music for volunteers, and it was an awesome event. It was really cool to see that many people out there working to make Whittier prettier. Also able to attend, myself and Deputy Harbor Master Loon both attended the acreage boat show, was there representing the chamber. But I just wanted to give a super quick overview because it was just awesome. We had a lot of boaters and just people that were looking for more information about visiting Whittier, so I answered a lot of Parks and Rec related questions, a lot of chamber and local business related questions. Deputy Harbor Master Loon had a fact sheet for the harbor. We had info for the tunnel, and it was just a really good experience. And a lot of people, I was very pleasantly surprised by how it was received. And most people we talked to said that they already are, they have a slip in the harbor or they already come to Whittier, you know, on the weekends to hike or whatever. But it was so, it was just really cool to share that, answer questions, and people are really excited for the summer. So I just wanted to share that with you guys. Thank you.
Thanks for taking care of it, Jim. Madam Clerk, anybody else?
Next is Mr. Greg Allison.
President, right? Good evening, Council. Thank you for your time this evening. I think you all met me about two months ago when I was here with my partner Trevor Hayes with Good Campus out of Fairbanks. And we're still very much committed to hopefully opening that business here one day in our beautiful community. And this is just us doing what we said we would do, living up to our ethos and coming down and spending time in the community and getting to know all the folks here, whether they are for our industry or product or not, but getting to know us as a people and what we're all about, what our ethos is about. I think I communicated that to everybody and let everybody know that I was anchored in today. I'll be back next month as well and the month after as we continue to build a relationship with the community. And if there's anything that the council thinks that I'm not doing our businesses and doing, that we can do to be the best stewards of business in this community as possible, we're all ears. I also encourage any of you that do get to Fairbanks, I don't know if anybody does get to Fairbanks often or not, but I would love to host you at Fairbanks, show you our operations, bring you to one of our rotary meetings that I'm the vice president for in Fairbanks and show you what we're really all about and just take the opportunity to continue to build our relationship with this community and any advice that you guys have to offer, we're all ears and we'll keep coming down here as often as possible. And if it pans out in a positive way, great. If it doesn't, we continue to smile and build relationships with the heartbroken Alaskans and the communities that we support and appreciate like the town of Whittier. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's all.
That's it? I thank you, Jamie and Greg.
Mr. Denmark, I believe Mr. Bender is asking to speak.
Do we have an appropriate time?
Yep.
Of course, Mr. Bender.
Oh, my gosh. I see you do a real quick Prince William Sound RCAC update. In two minutes.
Please.
I represent the Prince William Sound Regional Citizen Advisory Council. Just want to update you on our last meeting. We concluded January 29th. Couple things of note. Let me see, in 2023, we had 220 fully laden tankers leave the Valdez Marine Terminal and be outbound with over 15 million gallons of barrels of oil on each one of them and without any spills. Since the startup of the terminal, 14,000 of those left Valdez and now through Prince William Sound. And as we all know, one just had a really big problem, but that's a pretty darn good find record since then, 18 billion barrels of oil have been transported. So I think the industry does a good job. I'm proud to be a part of this RCAC. They do a great job kind of being a little bit of oversight to keep everybody, I think, honest. One other thing that we're working on are some buoys, which I wonder if we one day could get a chart of Prince William Sound for the walrus, that might be a good thing. Forty sixteen seven hundred is the number for it. But the buoy that determines if the sound is open for tankers to leave the sound and go out into the Gulf of Alaska, that buoy stopped working in October. It languished there, unable to do anything until it broke off its mooring early, mid-December, December 20th. And then it went for a little rut, for seven days. It floated adrift there outside of Hitcher Brook entrance. Now I imagine it's a pile of aluminum up on the outside of Montague Island, which doesn't sit well with me and a lot of other mariners. Number one, not one of us would get away with abandoning a boat in the middle of a traveled waterway. The Coast Guard would require us to go retrieve in pretty short order. Number two, I'm sure it's probably worth, it used to be worth four or $500,000. It's got a lot of expensive equipment on it. Now it's worth nothing and it's going to be an expense to get it off. So we sent a letter to our congressional district, their representatives, to ask them for some help because that determines if the tankers can come and go, that they cannot leave the sound if the wind is over 45 knots or in the seas are in excess of 15 feet. Not necessarily, that threshold is not necessarily so concerning for a tanker, but the service boats would be hard pressed to get out. There must obviously much smaller boats to affect some kind of rescue of the tanker to get a line to that tanker and tow it to safety. So on that same thing, the other buoy, it's next door neighbor, it decided it could break loose on the ninth of February here. I look at those things every morning, so I know exactly when it left off station. So it is now down below steward, probably heading for Kodiak. And again, we're pretty concerned that someone should go out and grab that thing, get it back before it again beats its demise on the outside of the Kenai Coast. Thank you. Any questions? Victor, you look like you have a question.
Baffled. Is there a Coast Guard station in Kodiak?
Yeah, yeah, but it won't make it that far. But there's one of these, the Coast Guard Cutter, it's been in the canal there about three times over the week, so, yeah. Thank you for your mission.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Vice Mayor, can I ask, Mike, is that buoy, was that buoy sixty and buoy sixty-one?
Did you get the question, Mike?
Nobody was asking if it was.
Sixty and sixty-one. Fifty or sixty-one?
It's buoy sixty-one, forty-six zero six-one, it's a Seal Rocks buoy, and then buoy forty-six zero seven-six is the.
Okay.
Stay clear.
Yep.
Thanks again. Okay, from here, we go to approval of the agenda and consent agenda. Is there a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Blair makes the motion. Mr. Wagner seconds. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Dan, do you mind? A couple of changes in the wake of our prior workshop. I would like to move our city attorney review until the March 19th meeting, postpone until the March 19th meeting. And both ordinances, 2023, nine and 10, also postponed to the March 19th meeting. And then somewhere over the course of the meeting, we should aspire to schedule another Title 12 workshop between now and then.
I would say to put that under new business, to schedule a Title 12 work session, discussion. So that would be under new business number five. Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Got it. And Dan?
Also under new business, I'd like to add the topic of housing and any, a slight, I guess, update as far as the topic, update code priorities. That's it.
They're going to new business?
Yeah.
So I'll add nine B six, which is housing, and nine B seven, update code priorities. Any other discussion? Hearing none.
Go ahead.
Voting on tonight's agenda and consent agenda as amended. Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Shen.
Yes.
Mr. McAlto.
Yes.
Mr. Pincush.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Denmark.
Yes.
Your agenda and consent agenda are passed and approved. On tonight's consent agenda is Resolution 2024 dash zero zero five stating the eight-point-zero mil rate of levy, date of equalization, and date when taxes became delinquent for the 2024 tax rule, become delinquent for the 2024 tax rule. Resolution 2024 dash zero zero six, retroactively amending the 2023 budget to record expenditures of $56,241.7 paid by the state of Alaska on behalf of the city toward the city's public employees' retirement system liability for the period of January through December 2023 and appropriating funds. Resolution 2024 dash zero zero eight, authorizing a professional services contract with Altman, Rogers, and Company to perform audit services. And finally, the approval of the January 16th, 2024 regular meeting minutes.
Okay, and at this time, does anybody wish to declare a substantial financial interest in a matter appearing on the agenda? None heard brings us to presentations and reports. And we have a proclamation thanking Dive Alaska for organizing the harbor cleanup a few weeks ago. And if you'll bear with me, I am going to take a couple of moments to read it. Shelby, I'm not seeing it in the printed text.
Peter, do you want me to read it?
Page four.
City of Whittier proclamation, whereas Dive Alaska in collaboration with.
Microphone.
City of Whittier proclamation, whereas Dive Alaska in collaboration with numerous volunteers organized a Whittier Harbor cleanup demonstrating an exceptional commitment to environmental stewardship and whereas the efforts of 94 dedicated volunteers resulted in the removal of 3,780 pounds of trash from the harbor, contributing significantly to the preservation and cleanliness of our marine ecosystem. And whereas Dive Alaska's initiative exemplifies the spirit of community engagement and environmental responsibility, inspiring others to take action and safeguarding our natural resource. And whereas despite the challenges posed by adverse weather conditions, Dive Alaska's second annual harbor cleanup saw the participation of approximately 50 divers who braved the cold waters to contribute to the cleanup efforts. And whereas Dive Alaska's training director, Alex Panzer, aptly summarized the significance of the endeavor, emphasizing the joy of uncovering hidden debris and the collective impact of restoring the harbor to its pristine state. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of Whittier, Alaska, that we hereby extend our sincere gratitude to Dive Alaska, its volunteers, and all participants for their outstanding dedication to the Whittier Harbor cleanup and commend them for the remarkable contributions to the well-being of our community environment. Dated this 20th day, February 2024. And thank you, Dive Alaska.
You're in.
Okay, and so there's our proclamation. Mayor Dickerson, do you have a report or anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, just a couple of things, but I guess I'll let Jackie update you on the Cruise Line International Association meeting that we attended here a few weeks back. And then also, Jackie, if you would mention something about shore power, the shore power work that Chugatch Electric is starting to coordinate on.
I can do that during my report.
Very good. And then I would like to make a comment as Vice Mayor here and would like to offer kudos to the Public Safety Department and specifically Chief Valentine, who has finally broken the code to allow us to engage in ambulance billings for our EMS services. It has been many years. All right, and that takes us to the city manager report. And Jack.
So I'll briefly, I'm going to let you know that our legal is going to get out on the eight o'clock tunnel, so everyone knows that she's not just skipping out on you to skip out on you. As the mayor had discussed, we attended the CLIA, which is the Northwest, Pacific Northwest Cruise Symposium, which gave ourselves as well as the chamber director or chamber president the ability to meet with the cruise line agencies and logistics of what that looks like for the Western United States. We attended it, being new to the whole overall presentation. We attended a evening event, but prior to that evening event, we had scheduled meetings with Holland America, Princess, Norwegian Cruise Lines, Premier Alaska Tours, and HUNA Totem. So we had a day where we could just have meetings with those individuals and those groups to see what some of their concerns might have been for what logistically the cruise ships look like here in Whittier and some of the questions that we might have or some of the problems or concerns. It did put, I believe it put us, you know, one more step in a door that would normally be closed to a smaller community like Whittier, but knowing that we have a large amount of cruise ships here in the near future coming. We had a great conversation with Holland America and their, one of their representatives to discuss shore power and what that looked like in the future in Whittier. Then that night, we attended a get together where we had the ability to just do a short meet and greet with the governor and, you know, remind him that we're really excited to be able to speak with him about Whittier in general. And then the next day was a day of peer training about the industry and how that looks in all communities and all aspects. So we left that meeting, coming back to Whittier and through those conversations, Chugatch did reach out to the mayor and myself. They are working on shore power to go to the Holland America dock, or the new cruise ship dock, but at the same time, they wanted to see if it would be possible to work with NCL and HUNA to extend possible shore power or at least have the infrastructure in the ground to the new cruise ship dock. So we are working on scheduling a meeting that would work with Prince William Sound stewardship as well as Chugatch and Holland and Norwegian Cruise Lines to see what that looks like in the upcoming future for Whittier and shore power. I also have completed the CAPSS, and the city clerk will send out a link to council. I do believe that you should have a copy of it, so she will send out that link that gives you, I sort of put this little book together and we're hoping that we can provide you the same type of document, but it shows our priorities that you had approved for the 2024 year as well as how those priorities line up with the CAPSS that we filed. And it gives you all the backup documentation for those. The projects and the purpose of the CAPSS this year, we have a DeLong Dock replacement CAPSS, we have the acquisition of railroad nonessential lands, the Shotgun Cove to Trinity Point land access and recreation project, head of the bay water and wastewater infrastructure, and the Whittier Creek levy engineering. We did add to, you know, in the past, we've had the head of the bay water wastewater and we've had the Shotgun Cove. We updated some of that and then we did focus the head of the bay infrastructure to be specifically looked at for possible design on your tank farm property as well as your campground and what that type of infrastructure looks like for the city. So it's not, it's not infrastructure for the head of the bay cruise ship terminal. They're putting theirs in. It's what that looks like and for possible expansion for the city in the future. So we made sure to have that in there. And I will have Shelby send that out to you all tomorrow so that you have it. We did successfully record the NSTAR easement for Glacier Creek Development, and now we are on to the next phase of working on the easement for their Chugatch line. And that also plays a huge role into Chugatch's possible funding to be able to put that infrastructure for shoreline at the same time. So, you know, I know that I can't speak for Chugatch right now, but I'm assuming that they are working to dig one hole, put infrastructure in and cover all their bases as well as the bases that the cruise lines and Whittier may need. The harbor Phase Three project, the coordination of the revenue bonds has been in, is pending, or sorry, is in progress. The waterfront economic development planning, RFP, the port and harbor is going to start that review of it in March. One other thing I was really going to point out, and now I can't think of it, I'm sorry. Public Works, they've been updating their maintenance and working on the sewer water and road construction project. If you look in the packet on page five, there's a detail of the city manager's report. And if you have any questions for me or any of the staff, we are fully ready to answer them.
Any questions from council for acting manager Wild? I didn't have my mic on. Any questions, comments from the council? Okay, from there, we go to public hearings. And Madam Clerk, our first two ordinances have been postponed to the following meeting, I believe. And so are we introducing ordinance 2401 or is it second reading?
This is the second reading, first public hearing for ordinance 2024 dash zero zero one.
Okay, so I is there a staff report for this ordinance? It's the burn permit. Is that you, Chief Valentine?
Yes. So the ordinance is to just have something that's adopted. I don't believe that in the past, looking back, that we've had any kind of officially adopted burn ordinance, which gives us a little bit of ability to control, to enact, and deactivate burn permits as necessary according to weather conditions might be that threats might be seen during this time, says. Rapidly change weather conditions and sometimes a burn permit being issued is not always appropriate. So enacting this will give us that flexibility and the ability to make those decisions to meet the current state in many different areas and have some strict specific guidelines as well as what's listed in here and penalties and some civil fines should someone not comply or not follow these instructions clearly. And for any questions with burn permits, we'll always instruct those, there are even burn permits and rules and things like that going forward. So this will help us to, to kind of adapt some previous burn code in ordinances that have been in others' codes in the state of Alaska prior that we can officially have adopted in our ordinance.
Very good. I am opening a public hearing for ordinance 2401 at this time. Madam Clerk, is anyone assigned in to speak?
No one is signed in.
No one is signed in. Is there anyone present who would like to speak at this time on the burn permit ordinance? There's no further public comment. The public hearing for ordinance 2024 dash double oh one is closed at 8:05. Is there a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 2024 dash double oh one?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Down.
Microphone.
I know this is the shortened version, but is there anything in here, where would you refer to what would be, I guess, considered hazardous as far as burning? I mean, it's one thing to get a permit, it's another thing to burn something that you may not be aware of that could pose a potential risk. And I don't know if this, this is related to the incident that happened over the summer, but I had received multiple phone calls, you probably did, if people were getting sick in the building and it had to do with a in the building and it had to do with a fire that was burning across the street. I don't think anyone was being deliberately destructive, but it happened to be the materials that were burning was making people nauseous.
Yeah, Councilor Wagner through the mayor, the, this ordinance will, people are not always educated on what materials that they're burning and what type of byproducts they produce. So it's not necessarily any fault of individuals. I think the problem really lies in that we didn't have anything in the ordinance that specifically stated that these are the rules, this is how we follow them, and this is what happens if you don't follow them, and any punitive actions that can take place. You know, when I get a phone call about somebody burning a material that may not be appropriate to burn, we don't always have the ability to enforce any kind of actions. There was nothing to stand on, there was no ground to stand on. With going forward, when I issue a burn permit to somebody who wants to burn something, it gives me the opportunity to go out, inspect the site, take a look at what they're burning. It gives me an opportunity in the fire department, the opportunity to go and educate them on maybe that their plywood is glued together and has these toxic glues that give toxic smokes and cause problems. We want to try to keep these items and things that are being burned to strictly wood and paper and plastic-type products. When we're getting into things like burning couches and plastics and things like that, that's when people start getting sick. Wind direction is a big thing, there's an air pollution factor to this, which also incorporates the public and safety and respiratory risks that puts people at. So this will just give the city the ability to say, hey, these are going to be our outline of rules and guidelines. If we need to stop this burning process for any reason due to wind direction changes or we identified prior to issuing the permit that, you know, this may not be an appropriate product to be burning, then we can stop it. We can say, hey, this needs to stop, you can't burn this, you need to take this out. So it just kind of hopefully gives some better guidelines or outlooks on what we can, what we can burn and what we can't.
Okay, so I guess what I was asking, so part of the permit process will be to educate them on what they can burn and what they can't burn, and obviously leave a window open for mistakes and changes, like if you have to go up there and it's something you didn't know about or, you know, didn't cover. This particular circumstance that comes to mind, I would not have known that what was burning was potentially a health hazard. I wouldn't have known that, and I'm sure they didn't know either.
Right. So I, I think a better way to clarify that is if a, if anything is more than a warming fire in a metal ring and a drill or something like that, that would be considered a, a small warming fire, if you want to put it that way. If you're having to get a burn permit, it's usually for commercial use or for large-scale burns. In those cases, anytime I issue a burn permit for something like that, the site will be inspected. The materials that are going to be burned, those are going to be questions that I'm going to ask, you know, what are you planning on burning? What are you looking at burning? If they're saying, well, I need to burn some old furniture and some old materials, then we go into that, you know, this is not going to be something that I'm the issuer of burn permit for. This needs to be commercial, this is commercial burning, it needs to be done outside this area, those type of things, because we want to limit the risk factors to people when we can. Does that help clarify a little bit?
Yeah, it does, thanks.
Question, if anything. So you're talking about large commercial burns or, or with recreationists, you're talking about warming fires, like a bonfire at the head of the bay and howl at the moon on summer solstice. Would you expect those people to apply for a burn permit?
If it's a larger burn than, I would say, a campfire size or something in a steel metal campfire ring, like you'd see at a campground, that would be a burn permit, but those would be on case-by-case basis. We can look at what's being burned, what the purpose is of that, what they're going to be burning in. This gives us kind of that umbrella to go and make that decision, like, do I need you to always, if you're just burning pallets and it's going to be four feet by four feet, do you really need a burn permit for that, or is this going to be a community engagement event? This will give me that ability to say, you know, we probably don't need to go the burn permit route on this, this is going to be a community-engaged thing, there's going to be multiple community members involved. We don't need to be, you know, we don't need to cause someone to have to pay a fee to burn something that is good cause, that's going to be an enjoyment for the community, if that kind of makes sense.
It, it, it does, it's a little subjective, but basically people who are using the existing fire ring barrel burning for recreational purposes for a small get-together, they would not need to come proactively apply for a burn permit.
Right. If it's going to be something small, then, and it's something that's controlled and it's isolated, then yeah, we're not going to require a burn permit for that, but if we're going large burns, things that should be got out of control, it's going to require resource allocation to manage the fire, then we need to talk to them and look about, look at those options. And we wanted this ordinance to be that umbrella so we could make those decisions together.
Understand, thank you.
My pleasure.
Victor?
So just a question about, you said, commercial burning. When I think of like a commercial burn operation, I think like burning slash piles in a forestry operation. We don't have forestry operations up here unless we go like a road project or clearing land. Like any burning of, even pallets, you know, pallets can be treated with all sorts of chemicals. I'm thinking of anything else here that would produce lots of like clean wood debris that would require burning. There's not that many cases, like even, and you know, wind and dry conditions are a hazard also, just the nature of being in a valley. We have atmospheric conditions that hold the smoke down, like hold emissions close to the ground, like there's inversion, and we have emissions that are held close to the ground, so it has to be windy, be a calm day, it might be worse because of keeping the smoke close to us. We experienced that with cruise ships.
Right. They burn, this is what you're talking about, how, where the smoke is just going to settle as well.
Yeah.
No, those are atmospheric conditions, those are out of our control. We can, we have to do the best that we can. When I'm talking commercial grade burn permits, these are people who are cleaning out a storage unit and just want to burn and get rid of all this stuff, and not use appropriate receptibles and rather just burn it off. And then we run into those ever-changing atmospheric conditions where we get those inversion layers, or we get those toxic smoke plumes that are causing people to cough and get respiratory illnesses, because smoke is a huge contributor to respiratory issues, nasal breathing problems. So these are things that we can try to prevent, and that comes with, you know, not just everyone hears a burn permit, we can evaluate that person's circumstance, evaluate what they're doing, where they're burning, and then we can make decisions based on those factors. And, you know, if atmospheric conditions change, then that day we may just decide, you know, that today's not a good day to burn, and we probably should postpone this for a different day. And that, that's all that we can do. So hopefully, you know, very, I agree with you, I think that there's going to be very few commercial burn permits that need to be issued, I don't think people are intentionally going out trying to burn big slash piles, and when those things happen, those usually state federal agencies.
Well, you said, public, issues of burning trash, things that, you know, that usually include a lot of man-made tarot plastics and stuff that release a lot of emissions, are right.
Right, and those are things that...
It's be better harder to dispose of those absolute landfill.
Absolutely. And that's the purpose of this, is so that we have some specific guidelines and we can adjust accordingly to everyone's personal circumstances to what they're going in, and we'll all be able to go out and vote and make those decisions to make it safe and better for everybody. Thank you. You bet.
Anybody else? David, Dave?
No, no.
Madam Clerk, call for the vote.
Voting on adopting ordinance 2024-001, enacting Whittier Municipal Code Chapter 8.08, open burning, and schedule, uh, that is the whole motion. Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkush?
Yes.
Mr. Shen?
Yes.
Mr. McAlto?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Denmark?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2024-001 is passed and approved.
All right, and that brings us to new business, and we have one resolution to consider here this evening. Resolution 2024-007, amending the 2024 budget to reflect harbor passenger fees as revenue rather than transfers in to the Harbor Enterprise Fund and re-appropriating funds. And Chris, can you give us some background on this, please?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. This is, I would call this really a housekeeping measure. It does not have any impact on the harbor budget, the general fund budget, or the harbor MRF budget. It's just a different way of classifying the, the new passenger fee revenues. What we originally did when we budgeted the passenger fee revenues was to budget for all of them to come into the general fund initially, and then the general fund would pay out to the harbor a portion of those fees and to the harbor MRF a portion of those fees. So the revenues all came in the general fund as revenue, and then the transfers out of the general fund to the harbor and the harbor MRF for their portion. When discussing the harbor revenue bonds with the bond bank, there are particular definitions of what is considered gross receipts in the harbor, and those gross receipts are things that we are pledging to pay back bonds. And if we transfer money into the harbor from a different fund, they're not necessarily considered gross receipts of the harbor, because they then appear to be really general fund revenues that we're arbitrarily sharing with the harbor. So our intent originally was to increase the passenger fees, and so we would have this funding source available to the harbor to pay this new debt for the harbor bonds. And in order for those revenues to be considered harbor revenues, they need to come, instead of coming as a transfer into the harbor, they need to come into the harbor as revenues. So it simply is reclassifying how they appear in the harbor budget. So in the harbor budget, instead of having a transfer in for passenger fees, you'll just have a passenger fee revenue in, in the harbor, and the same in the harbor MRF fund. Instead of having a transfer in, it'll just be passenger fee revenue in the harbor MRF. Now, that's not to say that the council can't move monies between funds, you still have the ability to do that, but in order to consider the portion that's going to the harbor to be available to pay debt, the bond bank would like to see those initially booked as harbor revenues. And so, as I said, this does nothing to change the bottom line, picture, financial picture of the general fund, the harbor, or the harbor MRF. It just eliminates the transfers out of the, of the general fund because we're going to reduce how much revenue goes into the general fund to begin with. So the general fund will get their share of, their net share of, the passenger fee will just be in the general fund as revenues, so in other words, a smaller amount of revenue because now they're not going to transfer part of it out. So it'll still remain in the general fund as revenues, and then the harbor's portion will be in the harbor fund as revenues, and the harbor MRF fund will have their passenger fees also as, as passenger fee revenue to the harbor MRF. And there's no other, you know, no ultimate impact to any of the budgets. So just reclassifying transfers to revenues. Not sure if I made it overly complicated in trying to explain it, but I'm happy to answer any follow-up questions.
Thank you. Any questions at the council table? Dan?
So, this, I guess I didn't do a good read on that resolution. Does that mean, we, we raised the passenger fee by doubling, does that mean that half of the fee is going immediately to the harbor and the, the original fee is staying with the general fund?
That's a good question for me to clarify. So we actually haven't technically increased the fee yet. That ordinance, I'm hoping, will come before council. That was what we talked about in the budget, and that's what we budgeted based on the, the increase in the fee, you're right. But the ordinance that will actually take that action should come before council, we're hoping next month, for the introduction of that ordinance and the passage of it in April. And so when we budgeted, we budgeted for the whole amount of the passenger fee revenue at the $12 to go into the general fund, and then 50% of that to go out of the general fund. And I believe it was the amount that was equal to the harbor bonds, the new bond debt payments, would remain in the harbor, and anything over that would be, would go directly to the harbor MRF fund to replace capital assets, because we promised people that when this rate goes up, it's going up for the purpose of paying for harbor infrastructure, both in the form of these bonds and any other future capital needs of the harbor. So yes, 50% was, was, will remain in the general fund, the other 50% will go to both the harbor and the harbor MRF.
Mr. Mayor, any questions?
Nope, none here.
Counselor Pinkush?
I'm good, thank you.
Call for a vote, Madam Clerk?
Voting on, oh, I'm sorry, first I need a motion and a second.
Motion to adopt.
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Voting on Resolution 2024-007, amending the 2024 budget to reflect harbor passenger fees as revenue rather than transfers in to the Harbor Enterprise Fund and re-appropriating funds. Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkush?
Yes.
Mr. McAlto?
Yes.
Mr. Denmark?
Yes.
Mr. Shen?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, so now into other new business items. We have postponed the city review, and the next item up would be conversation about city-owned condominium window replacement. City Manager, can you offer some background?
Yes. Over the last three years, at different times, we have discussed in the administration level some of the issues that we are having with our apartments. Our condos have, you know, they are a newer style of window, but unfortunately, by talking to individuals as well as having other people look at them, they could have been installed improperly and then just not taken care of over time, but we have some significant windows that have been repaired with duct tape. When we have large winds, they do get blown open possibly and have caused damage to your flooring in one of the apartments. So we, we, over the last year, have sort of requested some information from the baggage towers on how they have replaced windows in other apartments or who possibly have done that. Unfortunately, because they are city, they are city property, you know, we do require that anybody who does work in your buildings be licensed and bonded and insured. And unfortunately, some of the people that had had windows replaced in the past had, you know, friends or family members and put those windows in, installed them, and that is not what we can do as a city on your city infrastructure. So we did receive and go out and ask two businesses, we did call multiple, but two are the only two that responded back. One was Cook Inlet Windows, and you'll see here that for the, the three apartments, the grand total's $52,265. This does not include any guarantee or warranty for those windows. So once they're purchased and placed in, again, it would have to be a preventative maintenance thing and a movement on the city's side to make sure that they are maintained and installed properly. The next quote was by Anderson, renewal by Anderson, and that total is $98,000, but it does include a guarantee and a 20-year warranty with those windows. Another reason that we, as a... Another reason that we, as a city owning the units that we do, need to be in accordance to International Building Code, these windows, they open up, they have a habit of opening like this, well, they don't have a habit, they open up inward, and a fall, a child, an individual, an adult could fall through the window. So I'm asking that we, you know, I'm seeking your direction on how you want to take care of your infrastructure and what you would like us to do on the administrative side. And I'm recommending that if, with approval of council, that we bring forward a resolution authorizing us to do procurement and installation of the windows for solicitation for a competitive bid.
How many windows are requested here?
So, in, in 1507 and 1509, you have one large picture window with two opening windows, and then each bedroom has an opening window and a solid window. In 1511, it's one large picture window with the two openings and the same, but it's only a one-bedroom. I know that, I did have, I was in conversation in the hallway with Councilmember Shen one evening, and he did come look at the windows. He is, he's privy to some, maybe some information that we, you know, we can't find. He, he has been, has done maintenance on some of these windows. But again, my, my largest concern is that we need to determine on whether or not we have a contractor that's licensed and bonded, and what the, the city wants to do with the infrastructure. So I think Mr. Shen might have some insight on what he believes on the windows, but, like, I can tell you in 1507, the entire large picture window is duct taped in, and there is a crack all the way around, and the, that, you know, when the wind blows, the curtains all blow whether your window's open or not, and when we have those pressure fluctuations, you can hear the window, the entire window, move. So, you know, that, that again is another concern. It just might not have been installed properly and just has not been maintained.
None of them work.
None of them work.
What?
None of them work, installed properly.
Yeah, I'd say I have these windows personally in my apartment, and they're, they're very nice windows, very pricey, and the leakage I've seen, I'm not a window installer, but I've seen personally, it's not the window itself, it's the, where the windows, yeah.
The jam?
Jam into the building.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's where I've seen them fail. And then a lot of the mechanical part of the windows, they're failure there when they open, it's a.
Casement operators?
Yeah, it's bent. My, my family has many of these windows in their condominiums, and I've experienced just a lot of user error, because they're a, they're a tilt, what are they called?
Casement?
No, they're, they have, they open in two different axes, they tilt and they also, then, then they tilt.
So they open, they swing, they swing in or they tilt out?
Yeah, they're tilting and.
It's a swing or an on, a swing and an on combination.
Is it swing, you mean a casement?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a casement and.
Microphone.
They open, they open three ways.
Tilt turn, is a technical term, European-style tilt turn windows, and a lot of times there's been user error that damages them. I notice a lot of our failures, well, not, not our, but failures I've seen with my family's business, have been people leaving the windows open during windy days, and then wind blowing them, because they, they swing, so they build up momentum, and they can do a lot of damage that way versus like a sliding window, it just, wind just comes in, instead of having the windows swing and carry damage, something.
Tom?
That's fine.
So, yeah, that, that's all correct. I don't know how many people here remember Radio Shack. Radio Shack, you used to be able to go buy your own components, build your own speaker, build your own stereo, whatever it was. They had big components, it was all about who put it together. Most of these window manufacturers, these fly-by-night window manufacturers in Alaska, case in point, the one that did a lot of windows in our building is no longer in business, so his guarantee or warranty or whatever is out the window, so to speak, pun intended. They were not very well put together, and it really depends on what side of the building you live on, whether it was getting that wind shear, sun factor, whatever. None of these windows, and I'm sorry, the problem falls on the board of directors for the baggage towers and their bylaws and what they speculated, they had no idea what was coming. It's very loose language in the declaration bylaws about window installation. I guess what I'm going to say is, the biggest factor, yes, was installation. Nobody monitored it, they were asleep at the wheel, we had a lot of windows that were put in incorrectly. From what I've seen of the installers coming in, this one particular installer, I'm not going to mention names, but it's a premium product and it's a premium price. The rest of them, I don't know.
Do these need to be accessed from the outside for trim work and sealing?
Well, that depends. To do a proper installation, I think they would tell you yes, and most of the windows put in the building have been put in from the inside only, so they took shortcuts. But none of them, if you look at, again, I'm not going to say names, the last company that came down here that looked, that basically actually looked at, number one, the egress codes for people that would need to get out in case of an emergency, the wind shear value, the RV values, it's, it's a whole different ballpark. But in, in closing, I'm going to say that as a homeowner there, first of all, I believe that the onus should have fallen on the baggage towers. That is a condominium association. How many condominium associations have you ever heard of that don't take care of the doors and windows? How is the inside of the window your responsibility and the outside their responsibility? That's insane. Anyhow, I would love to see the city move forward with something to set an example on getting these windows replaced. I personally, when I worked for the baggage towers, had to go in the city apartment at least five times to try to tie one of the windows shut. It just won't stay shut, the latching mechanism busted. But the bottom line is, everybody in that building shares the utility bills, and therefore we are all responsible for the heat going out the windows, too. And I don't know how to make everybody accountable, but I think it would be a good faith effort for the city to do something about their windows. I have the same windows in 513, and they're garbage. But I live right on the corner of the building, and I get all the wind, and there is nothing I can do to keep that wind from, it's coming in from, it's not just the installation, that's a problem, too, it's coming in from around the window, but it's also coming through the seals on the window. I can't get it to stop, so.
Scott, you're in, so, so, good evening.
Good evening, council. To reiterate what the city manager said, we do have to comply with the IBC code. Just happen to know that in Whittier, IBC, the International Building Code, is a type C wind shear factor of 125 mile an hour, five-second sustained winds. So when we decide to go out to bid or to select a contractor, we have to ensure that they meet that requirement, and that they are installed and tied into the building appropriately with the, the building's rules and regulations.
We don't have it.
I know, but the windows that were put in are questionable, we do not know how they are tied in. There has been history over years of windows blowing completely out of the building. So because of the pressure differential or the pressurization inside the building going out, that's blown out. So you, you think about, you know, you got a four-foot by 10-foot window, 40 square feet, and you're developing 40 pounds per square feet, how many pounds of pressure are pushing out on that window or in on that window? So doing it right is imperative, getting a good quality product, it is imperative, and I'll use this line, I use it all the time, you have three options in this world. You can have it fast, you can have it cheap, or you can have it good, pick two. Well, we work for the city, and we're held to a higher standard, it has to be good, and it has to be reasonably fast, it's not going to be cheap. So, thank you.
So, these are picture windows with flankers that are operating multiple directions. Wherever we go with this, I might ask for some conversation about different types of windows. Everybody's going to want a picture, but for the flankers, double hungs are simpler and cheaper. And so I would look at designing these a little bit differently, and as desirable as, what does the BTI insist on for windows? Do they have a?
They have to be brown.
That's it, so it doesn't matter if it's a picture?
Yeah.
A series of three double hungs in a row? So the window type doesn't matter as long as they're brown?
No, just have to be brown.
And if I can add to, to some of what you just said, Mr. Denmark, when we looked at the IBC as well as what that safety looked like, we did look at double hung, you know, preferably something that opens from the top and slides down and keeps that bottom level solid. You know, there are two of the picture windows that in the last eight months, during a hard wind, blew the seal in the large picture windows. So when I, when Corby talks about that wind, you know, all of these apartments are on the backside of the BTI, so they do receive a different type of wind than the front side, of course. And please know that whether you want us to go out for a solicitation of competitive bid, or I would also recommend that we still contact the two individuals that did put their bids in, if that's what you wanted. One of these companies did just that, where they, the windows that they are recommending cover everything with the IBC. The wind pressure that Corby was talking about through pretty much, I mean, every portion of the International Building Code was represented in their proposal as well as the specs that they were going to build the windows on.
So this boils down to the joys of homeownership. And when this, as well as double hungs, single hungs are a cheaper option, and that's where the top pane doesn't move. The bottom moves up and down, double hung, the top moves down and up, and the top component really isn't necessary, as long as you can bend it. So a single hung window is going to be less expensive than a double hung. And I know that we have a bidding process to follow, and I know Anderson has a good name in Alaska. Can we target other vendors, rather than putting out a blanket RFP, is it actually request them to quote?
Vice Mayor Denmark, I think the council can do whatever the council wants to do within reason, and I think that the code does allow us to, for lack of a better word, sole source, and sole source doesn't have to mean just pick one company and go with them necessarily, but it does allow us to, to make an argument for hiring a particular firm that provides a particular product if we find that we can't get that same product or quality somewhere else. And so I think, in this particular case, Whittier is kind of unique in that, you know, we know who's worked here before, we know what's, what's worked and what I don't know, but the people that have been here a long time and that, that work with this issue are really familiar with what's worked and what hasn't. And, you know, you can go out for RFP, and you can also, under our rules, you know, be forced to go with the lowest bidder if you don't do a good job of defining exactly what you want, so that you give someone higher points, for example, for their past history and so on. So it's a little bit, it's a challenge when you have this kind of a situation. So I think if council were to make an argument, we could make the argument, but if you are willing to accept an argument as to why particular vendors haven't had good experience here and others have, and so you're willing to, I mean, I think we could make it work. I, I don't exactly know what you're suggesting, you know, are you suggesting that we actually know the vendor already and we want to go with them, so negotiate something with them? Or if you, if you aren't saying that, and we're able to, to create a bid process that specifically defines, for example, past history and successful history in Whittier of selling windows that had good results, if people were able to fairly score that and give that more weight than maybe price or so on, you know, then you can probably get to what it is you're trying to get to. So I know that's long-winded, but we don't have a lot of wiggle room in our code, but I think that we can make it work if council's willing to support making it, making it work kind of being flexible with how we normally do bidding.
Well, to simplify my comment, just what, if this was, if these were my units, I would be in the Yellow Pages, calling everybody. It's hard to get people to come down to bed, you can give them approximate sizes, you can determine some information ahead of time, and it sounds to me like they're going to have to hang scaffolding from the outside to trim these in properly. And there's not every company out there is going to be able to do that. So I always saw this as maybe one of those projects where you would ask somebody like maybe Scott to, dude, basically make the calls, because he is well-versed in the issue at hand. Anyway, that would be up to the acting city manager to task.
I can also let you know that we have done those calls, and, and we only had two people respond, and those are the two people that you had. I mean, we called about?
Thirty?
Thirty companies and individuals that had?
Really?
That we had been given. And, you know, it was, I, I, Corby walked through with, I think, both individuals at one point in time that finally did come. I, so, knowing, we know that already, we, we did that because we wanted to do our due diligence before we came to you with like, hey, by the way, here's a big old price tag, and so, but Corby, Corby met with the, the two that did come, and, but we, we have proof of emails and phone calls that have already been made.
In 15 years I've been here, I'm sorry, in 15 years I've been here, this has been an ongoing issue. And every window manufacturer or window company that has come to BTI, I have walked through and met with, so.
So my, my suggestion isn't out of line?
No, it's not, we've been, we've been doing that ongoing.
Okay, I know, I know. I'd like to think that there's a cheaper solution than $20,000 a window, if there's any way to expand the search for possible vendors.
I will gladly task Corby with that.
20, he does have a price variation. If you had 40 people in the BTI that wanted to have their windows changed up, the price drops drastically. But them getting the scaffolding, scheduling the scaffolding with the BTI to hang on the outside, to do it right, and then to move over the next block, and then to move over the next block, swap the windows out is easy on a ground floor. As soon as you're 15 stories in the air, the price goes up every floor you go up.
They tried that at the manor, and kind of. They didn't offer us to buy wi, to buy windows to save the cost, they told us we had to, and that really didn't work out for them. But, anyway, I don't know if that's a viable thought to entertain, Mr. Wagner might have a better clue.
They tried, they tried the same thing at the BTI. As a matter of fact, they made a motion and passed it. As a matter of fact, they made a motion and passed it. They just never did anything about it. They were supposed to. You had an option to take advantage of a loan where they would have paid 50% of the cost. If you didn't opt in for that, you had five years to do it on your own, or you would be penalized monthly. And they just never did it. But I just want to add that we do have the scaffolding. So I've also walked through with all these vendors. Problem is, a lot of them don't know how to use it. They're used to doing homes, you know, where they can use a lift or something. They've never done something that large, so it's kind of a challenge. But we have, we own the scaffolding and the window washer, whatever the heck you call it, thing. So we have it. It's a matter of getting some competitive bids, and I know you know this and I know this, getting anybody to come to Whittier is a struggle in itself. So, and there's lots of reasons for that. That would be good.
Can I just make one comment? So my understanding is in each apartment, there are seven windows. I mean, in terms of actual panes of windows. So you have three apartments, so it's, you know, 20 or so, and the highest price is $90,000 or...
Ninety-eight.
Yeah, so I mean, if you... That's still not cheap, but you're talking less than $5,000 each when you average it out instead of $20,000. Yes?
Yeah, okay. No, I understand. It's just kind of a little outnumbered.
Yeah, I just didn't want the record to reflect that much per window, because I think, you know, that's... People would misunderstand.
So to finish up, I'm just going to ask, I don't need a vote, but I would like a head nod if you would like us to entertain bringing forward a resolution to do a competitive bid, sealed bid for window replacement in your...
Yep.
Mr. Blair, I don't see your head.
I don't understand what the purpose of the sealed bid is.
It's just a... It's like an RFP. We post it out there, they have a timeline to respond. We do have the specs of what those windows look like, because thankfully, when we got the original proposals, we had them, you know, they had given us the measurements and everything. So we would incorporate that into that competitive bid, so that they knew what they were bidding on, and then we could score it and/or you could make the recommendation for us to sole source if that is what your wishes are.
By putting it out for RFP and it heads our website, it goes to the planning center in Anchorage, all the industrial blazers will see that, and then they will have an opportunity to quote on that as well.
I'm going to take your all head nods, and you'll be seeing a resolution coming forward.
Very good. And finally, for new business here, we are looking to schedule a work session for the 2024 Capital Improvement Plan and piggyback a Title 12 workshop onto the same date, is my understanding. Title 12 workshop onto the same date. And Finance Director Ertinger, would you like to speak to the work session on the Capital Improvement Plan?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I don't think that it's going to take a lot of time. We have about, well, 25% or so new projects added to the list, and there are things we've talked about before, so there won't be any big surprises on there. But we did expand the Capital Improvement Plan from a five-year plan to a 10-year plan. And so in doing so, we've added some items on, and we've increased the costs in some areas, because now we're talking about some things that need to be replaced multiple times within a 10-year period. So I don't really think that it's going to take a lot of time. I did distribute that out to folks, and on the very last item that you received, it's a spreadsheet. If you just look at the leftmost column, you'll see all the items in red. Those are the new items that we added. So you'll probably want to, you know, focus most attention on those and see if you agree. And then we just really need your input if there's things you think we're missing. So, you know, I would say that we probably don't need more than an hour of your time, unless you guys really want to do a deeper dive in some of the stuff that maybe we didn't have a chance to go in deep enough last year. So it's really at your pleasure, but when you're trying to schedule two work sessions, I know you have this and Title 12, I'm just trying to give you a sense of, I think we could do this in an hour or less, if that helps with scheduling.
It does, and I think with Title 12, with the synopsis, that Title 12 with the synopsis that legal is going to put together, that shouldn't take much more than an hour either, I would hope.
1.5 hours.
Huh?
1.5 hours is what Holly and I discussed.
Okay, so we would need a dual work session that would anticipate lasting for two and a half hours sometime between now and the March 19th meeting. And I don't know if we want to try to establish this date here this evening, or have the city clerk poll us here over the next couple of days. I am open on any date between now and then.
I believe Holly said she was not available from March 8th to March 19th, so it would have to be before March 8th.
Before March 8th.
So the other part of that, I'm sorry, the other part of that is Holly said that she doesn't so much need to be in attendance, as long as she provides you the follow-up, but she does want us to follow up with Harbor Master Borg, because he needs to contact the Coast Guard for that tank portion.
Right.
So I would recommend or suggest that you allow us to do a poll for you guys, even just for what that looks like with Borg.
Very good, and I don't think we need to have legal there either for these workshops, so it could be after March 8th.
Yes.
Very good.
Yes.
All right, and then other new business, a couple of items popped up as we put the agenda together, and Councillor Blair wanted to discuss a couple of items, code rewrite priorities, and housing issues in Whittier. And Dan, I'll turn the floor over to you.
So on the code rewrite, I think we currently are set up to go Title III, Title 12, Title III, Title 14, Title 17, and I would advocate the council consider, I guess we've got six items in the older resolution of title priority, and I would like to advocate to put in between, basically put Title II rewrite after Items 1, 2, and 3. So, and we could basically bring a resolution for March, and it would basically write... There's six right now, guess we'd add a seventh, and then that would allow council to either put it as number seven or move it up to number four. I know that there's been a number of citizens that have wanted to give more or less a modern way of giving input, which is remote attendance by audio remote attendance, and they were frustrated that they were not allowed to do so in, I guess, I mean, we've been allowed to do it, but evidently the ports of harbor and the planning and zoning are not allowed to have remote attendance. And just a minor tweak, and all of a sudden we can have members that have a lot of history in our community give input, as well as there are some minor changes that would fortify our residency requirements for voting, and there's a couple of minor issues with regard to code in how we put forward our ballot and things like that. So I think it's pretty important that Title II gets addressed prior to the upcoming election in October, and so that's my two cents on that. And then on housing, I think it's been over a year since any housing has stayed on the market for longer than 60 days. There's a definite shortage of housing of any sort in our community, be it for people that want to come here and work in the summer, or people who want to live in our community. And it was an oversight on my part that that was not put into federal, state, and local priorities. And I would ask council to consider updating those priorities by resolution to include housing as a very high priority in our community.
All right, thank you, Dan. On question to Jackie, is there a reason that Title II couldn't be re-prioritized to more, be addressed more quickly?
So twofold. This is how I would answer that. I have a good answer, I should say. When we discussed the priorities in terms of code revision, it was really specifically to help your legal firm, you know, prioritize what they were working on and try to cut back your costs. I do not see a reason why administration cannot work on doing some amendments to Title II with a attorney review of those amendments. So the way that that would look is, you know, the attorneys and the administration would still continue to work on these priorities, because we do have budget line items for every single one of these, so your attorneys have already worked on them. At the last... When we discussed this, at the same time, administration recommended that you allow us to do what you hired us to do. So I would say, you know, we can... We know what Mr. Blair had just asked for. I, myself, and the city clerk can look at what those amendments would look like just to the title, maybe not redo the entire title, but just those sections, and work with Mr. Blair, and possibly, I would say, because of this title, maybe we tie it in with the mayor. So mayor and Blair are already on a committee, where we can really dive into what that would look like, whether, you know, Blair or Dickerson want to have a work session after we've provided a draft to them of what that would, or we just, you entrust us with drafting that, having the legal do their review of it, and then bringing it forward as we would any other piece of legislation.
And then of the options that you presented here, I am guessing that Councillor Blair and likely Mayor Dickerson might like to have some input before it was finalized and presented, if that's acceptable to you.
Yep.
And that thought of having staff take over some of this ordinance rewriting, I do believe is going to come up more than once in the attorney review next month. Our legal fees have mushroomed. So is that satisfactory, Dan, to address that? And what kind of timeline do we expect to, who will proact here to open Title II forward consideration?
So I will ask Shelby to call for a vote for direction from council for administration to start the work on some Title II revisions. And then I would suggest that, I mean, I think we have a meeting with Mr. Blair and Dickerson next week, so we can talk to them on what that timeline looks like.
If that works for the mayor and Councillor Blair?
What kind of things are going to get knocked off the plate if we work on that now?
I would say that, from my standpoint, what Councilmember Blair is looking at and requesting is something that we are also reviewing with you. I can see that, you know, possible lease revisions or items such might be postponed a bit for us to be able to bring that forward in the timeline that Mr. Blair is asking for. Your election is in October. You would need to have those revisions done within the next month or two, so that we could have the public hearing process be very clear. And, you know, you don't want to change code like that 30 days before an election. You would need to make sure there's plenty of time. So it's February right now. I would say, you know, if the council is trusting an administration to do the work that we have been hired to do, then I would say let myself and the clerk write those, possibly give you what that draft would look like. And then, I don't know, you know, it's not a total code rewrite. Instead, it's just mending portions of it, and, you know, it's going to hold in the hands of you, Mr. Dickerson, and you, Mr. Blair, on how that process either gets held up or is helped to move along. So if we were to provide you a draft within the next 45, 50 days, and then, you know, it would be on your shoulders on whether or not you wanted to have a work session, or if it was something that could be introduced and a public hearing could be made. So I would say that 45, 50 days for us to do the talking to Blair and Dickerson, and then drafting those few changes, and then, again, you have to understand that your attorneys, even though we're asking them to do a review, they may say, I'm not working on Title III right now, I'm doing this review, and that could push us back. We have had that on multiple occasions when it comes to the code changes. So I would love to say nothing will drop off of the plate and be brought back on at a later date, but I can't guarantee that, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, and Mayor, Councillor Blair, everybody comfortable with where we're laying this for the evening?
Yes.
So I'd like to make a motion to direct Acting City Manager to take up Title II along the lines that she just outlined.
Hearing none. Voting to direct Acting City Manager to take up Title II as outlined. Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. McCulto?
Yes.
Mr. Pincush?
Yes.
Mr. Shen?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Denmark?
Yes.
That motion is passed and approved.
Okay, and then the other issue is housing. And housing in Whittier is a problem. I'm experiencing it myself. I have... I could hire six people tomorrow, and I have nowhere to put them. It's a personal problem, but this is an ongoing issue every year. The problem is especially bad this year with the number of the apartments being... I've talked to a lot of people in town about renting apartments, so kind of got to the label and that Turnigan Marine, the construction guys with this construction project on, that's where a number of these apartments have gone at the same time. So people looking for seasonal summer apartments this summer are screwed. It's going to happen, part of my life is. It's going to be problematic for those who are looking. And like I said, I'm experiencing... And like I said, I'm experiencing it myself. So it is a priority. And if we add it to our, I think we could add it to our local priorities list, whereas the state and the federal are those there to attract or state our purpose to granting agencies predominantly, I have no problem adding it to our local priorities just to pay homage to the problem.
One of the reasons why I wanted to put it on state and federal is to see if Prince William Sound Development Corp, or MNW will state their name correctly, but if they're might, if seated on a priority, they may be able to fair enough some type of support and/or advice to us as a community in a gentrification problem of housing.
Jackie?
So the Prince William Sound Stewardship and Economic Development has already done the housing study. They did come in and have multiple work sessions and town hall meetings. They've given us that report. You know, we will do what the council requests of us. I do want to make sure that, you know, that if you change your state and federal priorities, we don't have anything in our capsus that would, I mean, I really did build your capsus this year based off of your priorities. And so I can't file another capsus for housing with the state, those infrastructure funds and those possibilities. But Kirsten Carpenter did already, I mean, we have worked with her very closely on what that housing study came up with. And we also have the ability to include that even with the transportation plan, because they do use those type of numbers for the same thing. And I know it sounds weird, but housing also comes with transportation and tourism. And so I would say that, yes, we know that it is a priority, but to just add them so that they're a placeholder isn't going to change what Prince William Stewardship's already done, as well as being able to update your state capsus. And federally, there's really nothing that they could do for us.
It's not the stewardship, it's economic.
Thank you, yes. I get them all. It's one person, though.
So, Dan, would you like to move to any course of action here?
I would ask, at least on the local priority level, I know that HUNA told them, when they introduced the notion of putting in that cruise ship terminal, they said that there would be access to cruise ship vessel taxes to help us mitigate this very problem. So I would definitely try and advocate to council that we put this in our local priorities in hopes that we can start the discussion about where to go next.
So Jackie, is there any administrative kerfuffle to plug these into our local priorities?
We would need direction to bring forward and redo Resolution 2023-044, which is your city legislative priorities for 2024.
Just the local?
That's, you guys went back and forth on whether it should be local or city, and finally, you decided that it would be city priorities. And so Resolution 23-044 is your city priorities, and that is for the legislative year of 2024, which was acquisition of a railroad, non-operational lands, head of the bay planning infrastructure, Whittier Harbor infrastructure, Whittier Harbor business district restrooms, Whittier playground and park infrastructure, waterfront development plan, transportation plan, and request federal funding for assistance of asbestos, hazardous mitigation material for the baggage towers and manor common ventilation systems.
Dan, do you want to make a motion to direct administration to add it to our local priorities?
So moved.
Second, anybody?
I'll second it. I do have a question, though. Briefly, Dan, do you have any, right off the top of my head, the only thing I can think of is, we need some land somewhere to build something. I don't really know where to go with this. I completely support you, though, in this endeavor, in the fact that we have a problem. I just don't know what to do about it.
There isn't a solution that is tangible at this point from the inquiries that I have been making the last couple of years. Anyway, we're stating the problem. The solution is to be determined. Right. Victor, please.
Yeah, I think I'm a little worried about putting it on our local, or, the local or the city priorities.
It's city.
City priorities. Let's fear of taking away from our other things that we want to work on. I mean, we have the Economic District already doing the study, and it seems like we have people working on this right now as we speak. And I do support you on the notion, or the intent of addressing our housing issues. It is a really big issue that was actually one of the hottest topics at the last municipal league conference back in November, was housing. And it might be a category, so, like, yeah, I would, maybe having on, at the Economic District, depending, which one's on Economic, Building District, and I think it'll face with Jackie, maybe they can come back to us with a recommended approach on how we start tackling this issue.
I would think acquisition of railroad non-essential lands is part and parcel to anything happening. So I certainly wouldn't knock that off the list, or down the list.
It might even help in the negotiation.
Right.
It's like, it's dire.
Right.
And I just need to say, I understand, I agree, the housing issue is dire, but it is dire throughout the state. You know, I would feel better being directed to write a resolution in support of Prince William Economic Development doing something, or, you know, having maybe Kirsten come and do a presentation with you guys and seeing what she can do than just adding it on your priorities list and knowing that it's like at the bottom, even though we know that it's top, but it doesn't meet any of your capsus. And, you know, maybe that's a 2025 thing, where we already know we have a problem, and you make that your priority because you've checked some other things off your box. So, you know, I'll do whatever you request for us to do, but I would, I would think, like Victor said, or Councilmember Shen says, let us, let me reach out to Kirsten and see what that might look like in a partnership, and maybe we can address it, not through priorities, but through a resolution supporting what they're working on.
That's fine. I just, I just want to keep this conversation, we keep whittling on it until we, you know, we at least get a handle on something, but right now, I've got nothing.
And the clerk right now is sending you that study that was done, so you will have that in your inbox this evening.
Very good. Dan, you comfortable with those two issues that we discussed?
Yep.
Very good. And there's some informational items on the reports that require any discussion here, but are noted in the council packet. And that brings us to council comments. Anybody at the table here? Dan?
Did you get enough direction there, Jackie, for the development, housing thing?
I was about to ask you if you wanted to make a motion for us to possibly provide a resolution at the next meeting in support with economic, Prince William Sound Economic.
Yes. I'd like to make a motion. So moved.
I'll second. Do we have to withdraw that?
Yeah, I was just going to bring that up. You did move and second a motion to direct administration to add housing to the city priorities, and so we would need to vote on that, since it's been seconded.
No.
Or can he remove it?
He can rescind it. He can, yes, he can. He can rescind it, and he can agree to it.
Rescind the motion.
It now belongs to the body because it's been seconded.
Motion maker and seconded.
Yeah. The motion can make him rescind, and the second can agree.
Okay. Okay. But then we vote on the motion to rescind?
Yes. And, yeah. That's what you do.
Mr. Blair makes the motion, and Mr. Wagner seconds to rescind the motion to direct administration to add housing to the city priorities?
We had a motion on the table to put it on city priorities, and as the motion maker, I'd make the motion, I'd rescind that motion.
And I rescind my second.
Only to make another motion.
She's going to ask you to vote on the rescinding of it.
Once the motion is made and seconded, it belongs to the body, not to the person who made it and seconded it anymore. So you've now made a motion to rescind the previous motion, which also has to be voted on by the body. Okay. So you ready to vote on the motion to rescind the previous motion? Okay, excellent. Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Shen?
Yes.
Mr. Denmark?
Yes.
Mr. Pincush?
Yes.
Mr. McCulto?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The motion to rescind is passed and approved.
And I'm actually going to say one more thing. I don't need you to make a direction. If you want, I'm just going to say, Mr. Blair hearing you, Mr. Wagner hearing you, I will reach out to Prince William Sound Economic Development, Kirsten Carpenter, and see what that type of partnership looks like in regards to housing. Does that work for everyone? If I can get a head nod? I got a head nod from everybody, and on the telephone, Mr. Pincush, Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
I will look into that for you, and you don't have to vote.
All right. So that does bring us to council comments. Anybody at the table here, Tom?
No.
Victor? Little Rip.
My brain melted about 15 minutes ago. Come back to me.
Okay. Leonard? Dan, anything further? Mr. Mayor?
Nothing here.
Dave Pincush, Councilor Pincush, council comments?
Yep, I got three, three short things. One is, Tom, if you want to call me, I have something to share with you about housing. Cancel. Number two, on the, on the Title II and providing electronic communication, it's a small thing somewhat, but we did discuss, it was discussed about our attorney bills. One of the things electronic communication would be is the few times that the attorneys need to be there for commissions, they could do it telephonically, and that's a $500 bill at least per day. And thirdly, we talked about the windows and lack of housing. Are the three units that the city have utilized, or could some of those be sold to provide more housing?
I can answer that, Councilmember Pincush, through the vice mayor. So all three units are occupied. Two of them are rented. One of them is your housing for your fire department and the volunteers. It's basically like our police housing.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we didn't have them sitting empty.
Good, Dave?
That's all. That is all. Thank you.
Victor, anything you want to roll up?
Yeah. I don't really have much to say about, but I'm really curious about our comprehensive plan, and just make sure that hasn't fallen off our radar, because we have a lot of other stuff in our play right now. But the comp plan, if that's going to be something Planning and Zoning is going to be working on?
It is something that we have discussed in length at the planning and zoning level. Fortunately and unfortunately, in order to provide you a good review of the comprehensive plan and what that future looks like, you do need to have your planning and zoning code updated, as well as some other certain portions of your code. And the Planning and Zoning Commission is working on that draft. And as we see, you know, when we do a total rewrite of a title, there is a lot of moving parts in that, and especially when it comes to planning and zoning and land use and what the economic development in the future is for your overall community, including parks and everything. I would say that you should definitely let your Planning and Zoning Commission finish that review and know that they've, we talk about it pretty much every meeting, too.
Any other counselors have anything else on their mind here? Very good. And then we go to citizens' discussion. And those signed in will be given the first opportunity to speak. And then we'll ask anybody in the room.
No citizens have signed in.
Anybody in the room would like to speak? Ask Mr. Bender.
Sorry, I'm trying to keep you one. Just, I have a question about the resolution you just passed regarding the PTBT tax. When it was introduced in the fall, that was going to be a 2025 implementation of that. And I want to make sure that's still the case.
Yes, that, the draft ordinance will say that it takes effect in 2025.
Okay. Good night. Thank you.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes, about the city apartments. Apparently, you have one that's being used as housing for city employees, and the other two are rented. Is that correct?
They are all by city employees. They were all rented by city employees, but the one is operated through, like our fire department. They're volunteers. They stay there on a week-on, week-off basis, how, the same way as our apartment that is in this building operates.
Yeah. My curiosity is why the city even owned apartments. Real estate is not what you're deemed to be involved with.
No, this is, that's been an age-old conversation, Don, with numerous results for numerous different reasons at the same time. And as I've watched these issues come by, it's just always seemed prudent to hold on to them. Anybody else out there? And then, I would, anybody on the council who would choose to respond to what Mr. Bender or Stevens had to say? David, Dave?
Nothing here.
Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion.
We moved. I didn't see that.